Pledge of allegiance, if everyone will please rise. And Chief Rothles, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to go to item two, changes to the order of the agenda. Mr. Malpe.
No changes this evening.
Okay. A report from closed session, Mr. Rubens.
There was a closed session and a special meeting immediately before the regular council meeting, and there are no reportable items.
Okay, and we'll be moving to item four, council communications and announcements. We'll start on my right with Mr. Lewis.
Well, I do have an announcement, as you'll recall, when I was appointed to the city council, I was asked what I would like to do, if I could, for the city of San Carlos. Besides, and so I answered build a community center, which would be nice, and the other thing was to give out free ice cream to all the kids in San Carlos. So, on Saturday, September 24th, between three and four at Harmony, any kid, child from San Carlos that would like a free ice cream can show up at Harmony, and it's on the Lewis family. So, Randy, in this season of campaign promises, we're going to come through on that one.
I remember.
Well, thank you, Brad.
You have to be under, well, Bob, I don't think you have to worry about it. So, that's that. We also were at a golf tournament. Oh, is that my ringer on my phone? Mayor Klein, ringers, by any stretch of the imagination. Anyway, we had a very nice time at a golf tournament on Friday that benefited the Parks and Rec Foundation, and I wanted to thank everybody involved in getting that together and organized. It was a great time had by all.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Grisilli.
I really don't have anything, except the golf tournament was a successful operation by the Park and Recreation Department, and the mayor did win it, which was a little bit of an upsetting situation to some of us, but, as he said, it rang, and it must be ringers, I don't know what that is. But, no, it was very successful, and they hopefully raised some money for the foundation, and they continue to have different events throughout the year to move forward and help the Park and Recreation Department improve the services that they already provide.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, a couple of quick items. One is San Carlos Greenest last weekend had their garage sale at BA, it was very successful. I heard a lot of attendance, and a lot of things were sold. And the last thing I have is, many of you in San Carlos probably in the last week or two maybe received a postcard, looked something like this, but it refers to the San Mateo County Alert, and this is, you could go on the web, if you go on the webpage, SMC for San Mateo County Alert dot info, you can actually link in with your cellphone, your smartphone, whatever accounts you have, and you could identify yourself by location, or by school, or various categories of information that you want. So, if there is anything that's important, or that is alert status in the city of San Carlos, you will immediately get an electronic version of that on whatever you sign up for. So, I encourage everybody to sign up for this. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Grocott.
So, I have two things. One is tomorrow night, I think it's from this dais, the candidates for city council will be seated, and there'll be a candidates forum tomorrow night, and I believe that's at six, seven o'clock? Seven o'clock. So, it'd be similar to the time a council meeting starts, seven o'clock. That's being put on by the Chamber of Commerce, I believe. And then, secondly, yesterday, of course, was the 10th anniversary of 9/11. Myself, I went out to the Alameda County Fairgrounds to an event that was held out there, a lot of speeches given, and it was just, it was really moving, actually. They had storyboards up that showed pre-9/11, the various buildings and places where the planes went down, and then what happened afterwards, after the planes had hit. And then, there was another storyboard regarding the cleanup efforts, and showing the, you know, various citizens, and police officers, and firefighters, and folks in their efforts to rescue and find people and so forth. There were, actually, they had dogs there that were, there were two dogs at this event who had actually been search and rescue dogs. Of course, they're now gray masked and older, because, you know, a 15-year-old dog is an old dog. But it was very moving, and so it's something to be remembered and never to forget. And in fact, I would ask the mayor, if we could tonight, to close our meeting, and all of those who lost family members and had their lives drastically changed that day 10 years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Grocott. And then, the only things I have, on Saturday, the San Carlos Museum, along with the San Carlos Villagers, had a free ice cream social. So, it's nice, apparently September is ice cream month, but I would like to thank that organization, they gave out ice cream to all the children of the community. On September 24th, we will be having the grand opening of the new L'Oriola Playground, that's over on the east side. It is September 24th at 10:00 a.m., there'll be a ribbon-cutting ceremony. And last, not least, to council members Grisilli and Lewis, who played in that golf tournament, it's not whether you win or lose, it's how you play the game, and my fourth one just played a lot better. So, we'll be moving on to item 5A, presentation on Energy Upgrade California program that provides up to 8,000 per home for residential energy efficiency loans from PG&E and San Mateo County for San Carlos residents. Gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor Klein, honorable council members. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Douglas Alfaro, and I'm the program coordinator for Energy Upgrade in San Mateo County.
And good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Napoló Gómez Summer. I work for Ecology Action as an energy upgrade specialist across the Bay Area.
We're here today to share a few updates about the Energy Upgrade program, and highlight some new resources that are available to residents of San Carlos. So, we have a brief presentation to highlight the new resources that are available to residents of San Carlos, and then also reach out to yourselves as community leaders to help connect us, to be able to spread awareness of the program, to help build, to help build the knowledge base of, and awareness for this program, to assist homeowners in being able to access all of these resources that are now available through PG&E and San Mateo County for energy improvements. So, a bit of background on the program, the Energy Upgrade California program is a statewide program that encourages residents to make energy improvements to their home. The program has the support and backing of the California Public Utilities Commission, the California Energy Commission, PG&E, San Mateo County, and local nonprofits and cities as well. The purpose of the program is to help encourage homeowners to think of the home as a whole when they're making home energy improvements. In many cases, utilities were very much about offering incentives for individual items, small incentives like 50 cents per square foot of insulation, or a light bulb. The concept for Energy Upgrade is to think of the home as a system, to start thinking of making improvements to the whole home, while at the same time increasing the impact in energy savings, in home comfort, but also getting larger rebate amounts as well, in this case, up to $4,000 from PG&E. I'm also excited to announce that San Mateo County will be matching that incentive for a limited time, so we'll be able to offer up to $8,000 for.
From the airport department, that's what I was told.
But the part that I'm referring to is the end of the sentence, and seeks consequences for violations, and I think we should, before we send this out, just strike that, because I'm not aware of any manner in which the Airport Roundtable seeks consequences for violation.
We could certainly do that. Again, that was something I got from City of Millbrae that indicated that if there were people who violated it, they were submitted to the SFO for consequences, but we can certainly strike that?
Yeah, I don't think there is.
Okay.
So, if we could strike that. On number six, create a subcommittee of Roundtable comprised of the elected representatives from northern San Mateo County cities most impacted by aircraft departure noise, to focus on mitigating the problems in those communities and the responses that we agree with this. I would have a concern with that, because the Airport Roundtable has always taken the position that they won't push noise from one neighborhood or city to another, and my fear, if you had a subcommittee, is something might come out of that subcommittee, which could cause that to happen, albeit, I would imagine, any recommendations would go before the full board, but if that's going to be the case, then why not just have those issues dealt with by the full board, not a subcommittee?
And again, this was something that was recommended to us from the folks in Millbrae. Their feeling was that since the most impacted cities in terms of airport noise were the North County cities, and it's also something that the grand jury found that they were very much in favor of the subcommittee, but we can certainly disagree with that finding or recommendation. That's up to the council.
I think we're going to have some disagreement up here. Mr. Lewis?
I mean, it's a subcommittee, right? It would have to come back to the main committee, and they are most affected by it, so I would think that, to the level that they could change the timing, the number of, when those things happen, they'd be the most affected. And if it got into a bigger issue like that, if that's the Airport Roundtable's position, it would come back to Airport Roundtable, and it wouldn't. So, you know, to me, if I was in those cities, I'd want more representation to make sure we could do something more about it, so.
That'd be a counterpoint, my counterpoint. Mr. Grisilli?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mr. Lewis. You know, I agree with Mr. Grocott that you certainly don't want it getting moved down, you know, kicked down the road.
Right.
But I really believe there's a lot of checks and balances that would come into play before any of that would happen. I mean, obviously, there'd, like I said, whether it be through CCG, or God knows what, there's a lot of organizations that can deal with these kinds of internal things. So, I think that would be appropriate, because they are the most, I know Woodside is also, because the planes come in over Woodside, and in other places.
Yeah, they come in below 8,000.
And when I lived in Burlingame 30 years ago, they came in over my house, but the North County is really the most impacted. So, I would stick with this writing here.
Okay.
It seems to be the pleasure of the council, okay. And then, the last one has to do with number eight, and it is to expand the Roundtable membership to include a representative from the state of California Division of Aeronautics to serve as a liaison. And I wasn't sure how they would play a role, really. There's certainly enough representation of, my feeling is, again, you know, when I served on it, that there's, I don't know how to put this in a proper way, but, you know, there's a lot of representation, if you will, at the meeting on different issues by the aeronautics industry already, and to add more to it seems to be going in the wrong direction.
Well, and this one, again, this was something that we heard, in researching this, I heard from the North County cities, and essentially, all the recommendation says is this will be put on a future Airport Roundtable meeting to talk about.
Right.
That seemed kind of harmless to me. They seem to think it would be interesting to talk about having a state representative. Again, it's up to the council whether you want to move forward with that or not. Don't have a strong feeling.
All right. Is that okay to leave it in, if it's just an agenda?
Well, I understand it's going to, I understand the meaning of it going to the full board, but when it goes to the Airport Roundtable, if they've heard from a city that doesn't feel like this needs to be the case, that would have a bearing on the discussions, whereas if all the cities, including ours, agree to that, then...
Well, we have representation on the Roundtable, correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I think that would be a great time to bring up your ideas there.
Okay.
Okay, so can we get a, with corrections to number five, can we have a motion?
So, yeah, I would approve approval that we send the letter with the correction on number five, otherwise as written to the civil grand jury.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item 7F, adopt resolution, the city council authorizing the city manager to sign the amendment to the contract with Cachina Landscape Management. Mr. Grocott?
Yes, on this item, I only had the question if this has been seen by Parks and Rec, because it seems like it ought to be before it comes to us.
You mean the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yes.
Mr. Malpe?
You know, I can't answer that. I don't know if it went to Parks and Rec Commission or not. I know it's been vetted by the Parks and Rec Director, as well as the park superintendent, with Cachina working on the several item areas that they'd like to expand to include the maintenance contract, to get some additional work done.
Question, did the first contract come before Parks and Rec Commission?
I don't believe it did.
So, I'm just sort of wondering why that, this would, because I don't think the first one did, because it was just, it's a financial...
Well, yeah, and I understand, Mr. Grisilli, but I do think they would have a, I would expect the Parks and Rec Commission to have some grasp on how things are going with the contract position, which is new, and I would think that they might hear, have their ears to the ground a little more on what things are with maintenance and so forth than we might, so that's why I felt like, when I looked at it, you know, that it should go there.
To me, it came to us the first time, so to me, it comes to us the second time. That's only the reason I...
I understand. Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, well, I think it's worthy for the city manager to double-check with Doug that Parks and Rec Commission's aware of it, and they don't have any objection to it. So, I would think that'd be a good internal communication.
So, we held it up for...
I wouldn't suggest, because I don't know that, when I was on Parks and Rec Commission, we never voted on financial things. It was only just a recommendation back to the Parks and Rec Director.
If I may, if it's the pleasure of the council in the future to have any contract amendments with Cachina, or contract extensions, I think it's a multiple-year contract, but if you'd like the contract to go before the Parks and Rec Commission in the future, before it comes to the council, you know, that might be some direction you could give us tonight, and we could make sure we do that next time.
It seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Grocott, but it's like, the spirit of the thing is, were they kind of consulted with this, you know, like an overrun or addition to the contract, and we want to make sure, because there are liaisons out there, that they're happy with it, right? So, I would say, rather than bringing the contract to the Parks and Rec Commission, certainly to have the Parks and Rec Director make them aware of it, make sure they have no objection before it comes to council, would be great in the future.
Sounds good.
Okay, can we have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7F.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 7G, authorize city manager to execute Fourth Amendment to lease for office space at San Carlos Library Building with South Bayside Waste Management Authority, SBWMA. Mr. Mora, Mr. Grocott, do you have questions?
Sure. On this, as you read through it, it's adding on square footage. They started at 300, then 2,045, but it seems that they took over another office at 200, Office 200, I guess that's Suite 200 in the library, but then we don't get a total square footage, so there's no way to figure out what's the rental rate per square foot.
I believe the current rental rate is around $1.63 a square foot, and this recommendation, the council has a choice of raising the rate by 2.9%, which is the current CPI, or giving SBWMA one more year of no increase. Those are your recommended choices, and staff believes you should raise the rate this year.
So, the rate raised would be $1.63?
Plus the 2.9%.
Plus the 2.9%.
That's correct. And that's similar to another lease that you'll see next meeting from the Star Vista Group.
Yeah. Do you have any comments, Mr. Grocott?
Well, I would just, I would want to know how that compares, you know, this is Class A office space, so I'd like to know how's that compared to the market, and are we getting market for our space?
Yeah, and we actually reviewed this with a couple of commercial realtors in the area, and they felt that the rate that the city was charging was appropriate, and we did that in part because we had a couple leases coming up, and we also did that because of the request of SBWMA to have a second rent holiday. And I should mention to the council that last year, when this came up, we didn't have other leases coming up, so we granted it, because the market was a little soft at the time. Now, the market seemed to recovered a little bit, and also, we observed that in talking to the other tenants, that several tenants would like more space at the library. So, in light of those things, we didn't really feel this year, notwithstanding, you know, we do recognize, as SBWMA points out, when they had their meeting with the city manager, that the... out when they had their meeting with the city manager that they work closely with the city, although I think, you know, staff's observation is so too to Star Vista, so...
Business is business, friends is friends.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that okay, Mr. Grocott?
Yeah, I still, yeah, I guess it is.
Okay.
Everybody else feels okay with it.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7G.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to eight, reports to council. We are going to start with Chief Roethlis, 8A, update on police services.
It's like I actually did that before.
Yeah, you're the best one.
Good evening, Mayor Klein, members of the city council. Believe it or not, in just a few weeks, we're going to hit the one-year anniversary of police services being provided by the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office to the city of San Carlos. So it's a fitting time and actually part of the contract that we go ahead and report out to the council at this time in terms of how things are going. Presentation will be divided really into five areas. First of all, talk about crime in San Carlos. It's, you know, not necessarily a fact of the sheriff being here, but it's just a report out on that. Performance measurements, how we're doing, that's part of what the council had required during the transition, that we report out on those items. Results of the community surveys, which, community surveys was also a council requirement. What we've been doing for community outreach and future plans. The first one that I'll talk about is crime in San Carlos, and I want to set the stage a little bit so that everybody understands. I think some of this might be familiar to you, but how do we measure crime in any community? We do that through counting Part I crimes, and that doesn't include, as you can see, an exhaustive list of all crimes, but that is a good barometer of what kind of crime is going on in a community, and you can use that to benchmark yourselves against other community. So those are the Part I crimes that we, what we measure, and I'll be referring to when I talk about the crime rate in San Carlos. In order to give those crimes kind of context, how safe are we, how safe aren't we, we take that number and we try to, if we want to compare it against a large city or a small city, it's kind of hard because we're different, but if we can take Part I crimes per 100,000 population, then we can really measure crime rate, city to city, large or small, and basically talk apples to apples. And so that's what this Part I crimes per 100,000. What I want to point out to you really is the number of crimes per 100,000 population and see where we are. Where does San Carlos fit in terms of crime? The top bar is California, has a higher crime rate actually than the national average. That might make sense intuitively because we have a lot of large cities in metropolitan cities in California, and we have higher crime in those kind of areas. So below California is the national average, and then below that is San Mateo County. San Mateo County is safer considerably as a whole than the state of California is. And then below that, we have the city of San Carlos, which is actually a safe city, you can see, within a safe county in California, so we're sitting pretty good. I want you to take a look at the uptick in 2009. You can see that. That's not necessarily good news, but I promise it goes down in later years, and you'll see that that year, 2009, was an anomaly. Don't know why it was one of our highest crime rate years. So this is what's happened with Part I crimes over, I think that looks like an eight or nine-year period in San Carlos, and how they rise and fall. You can see that they held within a pretty tight band. We had a high year of 2009, which you saw earlier, low year maybe of 2003, and if you were to see if there's any trend, there really isn't any. You throw a trend line across that, and you can see that basically it's flat, maybe a little bit up, but not much, basically flat. Take a look at how we sit with our neighbors in terms of crime and number of crimes that we have, and you've seen this before in other presentations that I've made, and really not much changed. We have, we have less crime than the communities of Burlingame and Los Gatos. We have a little more crime than the communities of Belmont and Foster City. That's held true for years and years. It's true this year. It'll probably be true next year. So that's kind of where we fit. Take a look at some of our more popular crimes, more important crimes, or, and that's one being, the first one we'll take a look at is robbery and what's happened with robbery in San Carlos. You can see that a lot of up and down, really, it seems like a volatile kind of a crime, but if you look, it's, the numbers are so low that even a change of one or two can change the bars considerably on that. So really, there is good news there that I think our robbery rate is pretty low. 2009 was not good, 2010 a little bit better. What you're going to see on there is a green, and I'm sorry, we had it in the last graph, and I want to explain the green in 2011, and you saw it in the last graph for Part I crimes, 2011. When you see a green bar, it is a projection. What I've done is taken the first six months' worth of data, doubled it, and that's our projection for 2011. In addition to doing that projection, I went back to prior years, and I kind of said, if we had projected at the six-month mark in prior years, how would we be? And it turns out, it's actually a pretty accurate projection, so you'll see these projections are pretty good. So robbery rate, we projected, we had two mid-year, so we project four for the entire year. Unfortunately, we had one in August, so we're at three now. And again, in terms of a trend, there's a trend line that really isn't any money, any trend to speak of. Burglary is probably a most serious crime that we have on a regular basis in this community, and you can see, again, some volatility with respect to that. 2011 burglary rate expects to be about what we saw last year, a little less than 2009. That's what we're projecting. As I could say, projections could change, but that's what we're projecting at this point. And again, no real trend there either. Maybe a little down, just still relatively, relatively flat. Thieves from burglaries, thefts and burglaries from vehicles. A theft from a car is the car's not locked and somebody takes stuff out of it. A burglary from a car is the car is locked and somebody takes stuff out of it anyway, so they break into it. So these are thefts and burglaries from vehicles. This is what we're projecting in 2011, again, similar to last year, and a little bit of an uptick there, you can see, maybe driven by the 2009 numbers, but no real dramatic change in crime in that category. And so in terms of crime in San Carlos, I think the best way to sum it up and to summarize is that San Carlos is a safe city. We're a safe city within a safe county, and we're very fortunate about that. And I think we, it's something that we can take pride in in this community. We have a lot of tangible assets that we take pride in this community, our parks and our facilities and all of that, and our downtown, but safety isn't intangible, and it is part of the fabric of this community, is one of the things that makes us a great community, and it's something that we can be proud of. But we do have crime in the city, and you saw the numbers. We do have crime, and people need to take normal crime prevention measures. Another thing is that Part I crimes are flat despite development. We saw that there really is no increase in crime, and yet we all remember the development that's taking place and the vitality that's taking place downtown. Downtown is much more vital and lively than it was eight or nine years ago. We have the San Carlos marketplace and numerous other successful retail businesses that have come in, and yet despite all of that, we've been able to keep a relatively low Part I flat, or flat Part I crime rate, and I think that speaks well to the public safety policies enacted by the council, and it also speaks well to the community development process and what's done to make sure that that's done safely as well. Property crime is our most common offense, and I'll talk about this again probably later, but complacency is our Achilles' heel. There are people who just think nothing happens here, so they don't lock their houses, and they don't lock their cars, and it's a great city, but sometimes we, with respect to crime, sometimes we get a little too comfortable, and, you know, we could probably be better at practicing some crime prevention behaviors as a community. That's, that's one area I think this, where we could improve. And, you know, deputies see that when they're out on calls in crime, they really feel could have been prevented just by simply locking doors or putting your property away. In terms of crime clearance rates, you've seen this before. I'm kind of measuring what we've been doing with the sheriff's office against the police department and how they've been doing. It's not a contest. It's not designed to be a contest, but if I throw numbers out there without any context, you're not going to know whether things are going good or not. So I use the San Carlos numbers because I know you know that that department did a very good job with respect to these issues. And so here's the clearance rates, and what we can see is overall, there's really maybe 1% difference in terms of clearance rates, not much. You can see that in terms of property crimes, clearance rates for the police department were a few percentage points higher. In terms of violent crime, the current clearance rate for the sheriff's office is a few percentage points higher. Overall, it's basically exactly the same. And again, what I did is I took the first eight months of the contract period under the sheriff's and measured that against the previous eight months under the police department, so we were able to, again, compare apples to apples on clearance rates, and that's where we sit. Overall, those are good clearance rates. If you take a look at the state, you took a look at the nation, and even the county, being able to clear that rate, those are very good clearance rates. With respect to emergency response times, here's where we sit with respect to emergency response times. We measured the first few months just to see how we were doing month to month. We kept a close eye on that, and we found that in the first month, it looked like the response times of the police department were a little better. The second month, for some reason, the sheriff's office response times were a little better, a little quicker. In January, we saw they were basically exactly even. And then we took a look at overall during the eight-month average, during the same eight-month period last year, and we saw that the sheriff's office response times were, I believe, approximately 3.8 minutes. The police department's response times were approximately 3.7 minutes. Given the way that response times are coded in and how much human input is required into those, that kind of a one-tenth of a minute difference is really not statistically significant. I believe that if we took a different eight-month period, we might have a different result, but essentially, our response times are the same. I really felt that would be the case before the contract, that we would have response times of basically the same. It makes sense. We're deploying the same amount of units in the field. We have the relatively the same exact call volume, so response times really shouldn't change, and they really haven't. In terms of our overall arrest, again, I used the green as a projection. It is based upon our first six months of the year. Performance has been good. A lot of initiated activity on the part of the deputies in the field. They are making arrests. They're making good arrests, and they are proactive. Not all these are dispatched. The stuff that they're doing on their, this is stuff that a lot of them do on their own in terms of these arrests. I think what is interesting is that there's a big difference in terms of felony arrests. The deputies are making significantly more felony arrests than we're on track to in 2011 than we had in prior years. A lot of proactive probation and parole searches, you know, that's going on, and so it's just a lot more, a lot of productivity on their part and just really good police work, and so that performance is there. This is one of the issues and concerns was traffic enforcement. The sheriff's office was not necessarily into traffic enforcement, and we couldn't expect much, and yet when we take the first six months' worth of volume of traffic citations written and double that, and as a projection for 2011, then we're on track to write more citations this year than we had in the previous four years in terms of enforcement. And I think that's, you know, I think these, you've seen us out there. I think the deputies have been, they've been fair, but they've been strict on terms of enforcement, in terms of speed and stop sign violations. We work complaint areas, and we write citations in complaint areas. We have the traffic deputy, obviously, and the council approved additional traffic enforcement, and so you might even see higher numbers by the end of the year with respect to traffic enforcement. We've been very engaged with the community since we were let out, and these are just some of the projects that we've been involved in. If you can see the signboard there, I believe that's at Loryola Park. That's sponsored by the San Mateo County Deputy Sheriff's Association. Didn't take them long to get their stamp on the community and to help sponsor community events, so we had that sponsorship. But we also did a toy drive in conjunction with Beakini's Market. We've got kids back in the PAL program. We've had the honor guard in the community at the funeral of Mayor Omar Ammott. Our honor guard was there. We've graduated 26 citizens from the San Carlos Citizens Police Academy. The first time we were able to have something in this community like that in maybe six or seven years. We've had a town hall meeting with the community here that was well-attended in June, participated at National Night Out in Hometown Days, and been in front of the Transportation and Circulation Committee to talk about traffic and transportation management, and made presentations to that committee. We've also worked pretty closely with our school. We've got a designated school resource officer. You've seen letters and commendations of that person, participated in safer routes to school, developed traffic enforcement schedules for each school to make sure that they got equal attention or, you know, something close to equal attention, helped them with their earthquake trail, emergency preparedness, and with the wellness committee. One of the things that the council required when we came to the contract is the council wanted community surveys. They wanted to know from the community what they felt about the sheriff's office services, and so we've done those surveys, and we've completed a survey period, and, you know, basically what we've really believed is that the community wants just four basic things from, from their deputies, or three basic things. First of all, they want to know that the deputy cares and is concerned about why they were called, that when they arrived, the person who's arriving is competent, and that they are professional, and those are the three areas that we focus in on, and we ask another question of overall satisfaction. So the question basically is, you know, do you feel that the deputy, I feel, I believe that the deputy was professional in their contact with me, and then there's a level of agreement from strongly agree to strongly disagree. And so there's four questions along those lines in the survey. We distributed 268 surveys since the contract, and how we did that is randomly. Somebody called the police. We looked at the daily. It could be a crime, it could be an accident, it could be an alarm call, could be traffic complaint, and randomly just picked names and sent them surveys. We did that 268 times, and we got 80 back, and that's the 30% return rate on those surveys, and that's a pretty high return rate for anybody looking for citizen or customer satisfaction. To get a 30% return rate on their surveys is extremely high. So because each survey had four questions, and we got 80 back, there's 320 opportunities for a citizen to express a level of satisfaction or dissatisfaction. Out of those 320 opportunities, only five people, only, there was only five markings in the unsatisfied rating, so that gives us a satisfaction rate of police services of 98.4%. And I'd say any business would take that. And again, that's not just a few results. Those are 80 surveys back, and we're really proud of that. And also, I didn't bring with me, there's some, just the comments on the cards, too, I think is what I'm the proudest of, not the numbers, but the level of care and concern the deputy took, the extra attention they paid on what was really an insignificant call, the way the deputy made that person feel significant, you know, the promptness of their response. You know, a lot of those cards had a lot of really nice things written on them, and that's what I'm proudest of those surveys. Those are results, again, I said, each question has a level of agreement, one being I strongly disagree with that statement. I strongly disagree that the deputy had showed care and concern, with six being I strongly agree that the deputy showed care and concern in their call with me. And so you take all of those results and average them, and not throwing any of the scores out, these are all the scores, and that's where they're falling. And again, I think that bodes well in terms of community satisfaction with the sheriff's office, and we're certainly very proud of those results. The other thing I want to show you in terms of, you know, certainly the budget was one of the drivers to do this, and we take a look at how much we're spending per capita on police services in comparison to some of these other communities, and you can see where San Carlos PD was in the middle back there. At that time, that was our 0910 budget. We were probably the lowest per capita already, and since that time, you see Belmont, Millbrae, and Pacifica, they've cut their budget more in the last couple of years, so they actually are now per capita less than San Carlos was years ago. But at the far right is the San Carlos Patrol Bureau. This is what the city of San Carlos is paying for police services per capita in comparison with the surrounding cities, and it is the lowest per capita rate that people are paying. You see many minor differences between it, maybe $20, up to $50 between some of these cities, but remember, you're multiplying that across 28,000 people, so this is a lot of money. You're talking about the difference, and the question then becomes is are you getting bang for your buck with respect to that? You're, you know, you're paying a low rate, but I think that the service that you're receiving is still excellent, and I think that the objective facts, you know, point that out. In terms of what we would like to do in the future, what things are coming up, we are migrating our dispatch to county communications. You'll hear a presentation from me on that tonight. And also, within the next month or so, I intend to come in front of this council again to do an information report on prison realignment and what the impact of that might be. I think you're all vaguely familiar with the issue. I'm getting schooled on the issue, and we're dealing with it certainly at the county level. And this is a huge impact on the release of prisoners in California, the impact of what it's going to do to probation and parole, the amount of leverage that we are losing on certain types of convicted criminals, and what that might mean for this community and for crime in general. I've heard the district attorney say, and I think he's right, he's had a long career in law enforcement. This is the biggest game changer in law enforcement in his career, and it is the biggest game changer in my career. Prison realignment is a game changer. Make no mistake about it, and, but I think there's a lot of things that this community can do to be prepared, to be well-prepared for that, and I'll talk about that a little bit in a minute. Emergency preparedness initiatives, there's a lot going on. We did talk about that at strategic planning retreat. We're doing some emergency preparedness. We've done some in the past and continuing to move forward on some of that. Promotion of SMC Alert, Councilmember Randy Royce talked about that tonight, the postcard you got. Thank you for that promo on that. But we are really going to focus a lot on doing everything we can to get people in this community to sign up for SMC Alert. It is a way that we can communicate with every individual in the city however they want to. Do you want to text on your cell phone? You can get one. If you don't want it on your cell phone, you just want it on your email, you can get that, too. However you want information, you can get it. What's good about that, it allows us to communicate early to people, even before they read the paper, about what's happened, what's happening in their neighborhood at that moment, other things that they need to take care of to protect themselves. It was... It was incredibly important in a disaster, in any kind of flooding or traffic issue. And so, you know, we've had situations in this community where there'd be a crime take place, and within an hour or two, it was spun up to be something it wasn't. So this allows us to communicate real, accurate information to make sure that urban legends don't take hold. So I thank you for promoting that, Councilmember Royce, and like you, the support to continue to promote SMC Alert, because it will be something that I really want to increase enrollment on, and I think the community would find it advantageous. And like you, we're also very excited about the new fire department. I've been privileged enough to participate in the selection of their deputy chief and also in just being part of helping get it going. And, you know, I've had an opportunity to have lunch with the fire chief and talk about some things that we can do as public safety partners, and so, you know, we're excited about that and working with the fire department. So that pretty much concludes my presentation, and I just want to say, on behalf of Sheriff Greg Monks and all the men and women of the Sheriff's Office, it's been a privilege to serve this community. The Sheriff's Office really felt that we could do an effective job policing a municipal community, and I think that we've done that, and I think the data shows that. So I'd be glad to open up for questions.
All right. Well, first off, thank you very much, Chief, and extend our thanks to the sheriff, the undersheriff, and all the men and women of the San Carlos Bureau. We will start. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will go to council questions or discussion. It's just a report, so if you have any questions or concerns.
Just a couple of questions. I'll just throw them out there, and then you can respond to each one, if you don't mind. If you could hit on graffiti abatement, anything that's being done there, gang task force, that's something that we were involved with before when we had our own department. If you could update us on that. We had talked at the, it came up at the retreat about noise emanating from vehicles. I know Mr. Survey and I were in a, you know, our own little group, and we were going to hit on that under community character, but we thought it would get taken up by the law enforcement group, and then it wasn't. So I'm wondering what happened to that when it got reviewed, because I know the staff takes all the comments and reviews those, so if there's anything that's going to happen on that comment that was made. And then lastly, this is not a question, but a comment, is when you do your reports to us next time, I think I would like to see a question that talks about how the community feels about the visibility of the police in the community. Are they visible enough, that they see them around enough? Something of that nature.
Okay. With respect to the graffiti abatement, we still do the same thing. We have the same equipment, so we're, our objective is first to do what we can to get the owner, the property owner, to go ahead and abate that themselves. If they don't, if it's on public property, we get on it right away and get that abated. If it's on private property, we give the owners an opportunity to go ahead and abate that, and if they don't, we can go ahead and enforce the abatement or take care of it ourselves. So that hasn't really changed with how we handle vandalism or graffiti type of situations.
Excuse me, it's still being, so is then it's being photographed and cataloged?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And then with respect to the gang task force, San Mateo County does have a gang task force. They operate pretty much full-time during the summer and then maintenance periods during the year. And the San Carlos Patrol Bureau still participates in that. We send people to the gang task force, just like the police department did. So we're still, we're still members of the gang task force. I think you spoke about the noise complaints coming out of vehicles. What I've done in the past is make our patrol force aware of that violation downtown, and we didn't do anything strategic. It's not, you know, it's not, in my view, necessarily a strategic project so much as it is a complaint that we can certainly handle on an ongoing basis, and that is a matter of making patrol aware of it. There's also things that we can do to help make the community aware that that's a violation. Things like that, I believe, are perfect opportunities for the use of SMC Alert, if we can get people on there to alert them about that violation. And that's just one of the reasons I want that communication mechanism to be strong in this city. But with respect to that particular violation, our deputies are aware that there's complaints about that, that that is downtown Laurel Street, that it's affecting people's quality of dining and their experience out there, and they're looking for that. In terms of whether citations have been issued, I don't have that information right now with me. And then your last question related to presence, and we've completed this survey period, so I'm glad to take your feedback on this question about visibility and presence, and what do people see and feel? Because I think we're pretty much done with this survey. We've shown what we're doing on calls, and now there is this, and I think Mayor Klein has mentioned it as well, is what does the community at large feel? What do they think? Maybe they haven't received a service, but what are they thinking and feeling about that? And so as we move into a new survey period, maybe next year, we can try and look for, rather than get the specific sense, we can try and get the general sense of the questions that you've asked and the questions I've heard from Mayor Klein.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Royce?
Yes. First of all, another great report. The improvements we've made in bringing on a traffic officer has helped a lot. I think the clearance percentages surveyed are exceptional. Matt's, Mr. Gocott's question on visibility was actually an observation of mine, so there's no validity to this, but when I talk around town to people and ask them how things are going, people comment a lot on the visibility of our force. I mean, they say they are all over the place, and so that's, again, not qualifiable, but I think we're doing a great job. Two questions you could think about, you know, because, again, you said we feel we have a safe area, so people don't lock their cars, they keep their iPods up in the, under their seat and so forth. What kind of PR or educational things do we have going on over the next year? And the last question, or the second question would be, how's our staff doing? You know, this is major change for them in the city of San Carlos. Any initial reactions on staffing?
Well, let's take the staffing question first and talk about maybe some I didn't mention. I mean, we've had all those 80 surveys that have come back and, you know, that have come back about this community, and all the numbers and all the results that you've seen are a result of the staff here. I mean, I've been to about three calls out of the net 18,000 that we've had, so these satisfaction surveys are a result of our staff and the work that they've done, and they really deserve the credit for what's been accomplished here. But, you know, in terms of the success, why this has been successful, because I think it's now proven that it has been successful, one of the things that made it successful actually was the staff and how the council made a decision that how staff would be transitioned and how they would be treated during that transition. And that's gone a long way in terms of how people feel about the position. There's still some stinging from having the department disbanded, no question about that, and maybe many of you on the council feel it. It was a very difficult and tough decision. But the way that employees were treated, set the stage for a good transition and really set the stage for a good taste in their mouth, whether they went to work in the jail or whether they stayed here. A lot of the deputies who are here are former San Carlos police officers, and they're working hard, they're working a good attitude, and they're responsible for a lot of these. So, you know, the staff is doing good. We have a transfer coming up in January where some of our deputies are in the jail, may come out. We will see a lot of transfers going on there, but we, I think the staff has done really well, and a lot of it has to do with how they were treated in the transition by the city.
Thank you, Mr. Royce. Mr. Gocelli?
I have no questions or just comments. You did a great job, I think. I think the community, I think when you do that thing that Mr. Royce indicated, I think the community is going to feel that it's well-represented and well-protected as it was before.
Mr. Lewis?
Quick question on San Mateo County Alert. I love it, and I've been doing it for as long as it's been in existence, and it's a great thing. I would, as Councilman Royce mentioned, everybody should get on that. It's fantastic. But I have one question about it. In the event of a, like an earthquake, a broader disaster, how localized is that information or could that information be? In other words, if there was an earthquake, I know, you know, sometimes you get a road closure or something like that, would it be detailed, as detailed as what's going on in the city of San Carlos, like if we're working remotely and we're trying to figure out what's going on back?
Yeah, it could be both. You'll get a, you'll probably, if you sign up for it, you'll probably get a text from this county. Everybody will go out countywide, to everybody in the county, that we just had a 6.6 earthquake centered on the scale. These are what's down. This is what you need to do right now. Here are some suggestions about it. So you're going to get this. And then let's say, for example, during that, we have an incident happen in San Carlos that causes a road closure. Well, then, San Carlos, we can go ahead and send out a blast, either countywide or just to people who sign up to San Carlos, to say, hey, you know, the bridge at such-and-such location has collapsed here. This road, there's going to be a detour. It's both. That's one of the beauties of SMC Alert. It can be as broad or as narrow-focused as you want. You can select a city, you can select the county, you can select multiple cities, so...
That's good news. And then does that include tweeting? In other words, and the reason I ask that is sometimes a text message may be telegraph language. Tweet, you can do 140 words or some such thing. Andy, is it 140 words or characters?
Characters.
Characters. So you could get more detailed information, or certainly the city could put out more detailed information. Do we have that ability?
Here's how we do that. If you sign up for the text and email, you'll get a text that says, you know, for example, we did this one recently, mountain lion spotted in X area. For more details, see your email, because we don't have that much character space on that. So it's not really a tweet, but kind of sort of like one, I guess. We don't have that much character space on a text message for a cell phone, so what we'll typically do is give a brief synopsis of what happened and then direct people to their email on SMC Alert to get more of those details.
Great. As much as possible in emergency preparedness, if we could really make sure we exercise, and we're going to be doing some exercises in the future, how that system might really hold up when, you know, 200,000 people in the county are searching for detailed information within their community, which hopefully we'll all sort out. And the last thing, I just would like to point out that, you know, a lot of, you do such a phenomenal job for the city in representing the men and women on the force, and, you know, in addition to the great work that they're doing, organizations are defined by their leadership, and we are really lucky to have the dedication you've had in San Carlos personally. I know that you're not a guy that wants to take some personal accolades and credit, but I will tell you that I feel like we're extremely fortunate to have had you all these years and have you now and have you through this transition and everything else. So I just want to thank you for the great work that you do, because I think organizations and their leadership are very important, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chief Ross, Chief Office. The only thing I really have is to mention on the visibility, it's the only complaint I've heard about the Sheriff's Department, it's a complaint I really don't want you to do anything about, is that there's just too many cops now. So, you know, it's just too bad. Exactly. But that's something we're not going to do anything about. But I think it's also because people are aware that we're part of the Sheriff's Department, so when they see the transit police or they see other sheriffs going through town and the unincorporated, they believe that those are our department as well, and I think that's a good feeling to know that we're surrounded by this much larger department. So, you know, that is a complaint that I hope I keep getting. But thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 8B, report to council, transition to San Carlos Fire Department and Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department dissolution. Mr. Moore will head this up. Just to note, we have our future fire chief, Jim Skinner, is in the audience, with our deputy chief Stan Mopin, and our current fire marshal, Jim Polisi, is here as well, but I think Brian's going to be handling this.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, and the mayor is right. I will kick it off, and then we have three members of the Redwood City Command Staff and also Rebecca Bendenhall, who's been an ace part of this transition as well as with us. As you see, we now have a new logo for the department, and it's on tonight's presentation. That was actually designed by Captain Wilkerson, who's one of the Belmont-San Carlos folks who's coming over. So we appreciate his art assistance as we transition. In terms of the background, again, I'm sure you all recall, on April 25th, the council unanimously voted to create or reestablish the San Carlos Fire Department and also to contract with Redwood City's Fire Command Staff for management. In your strategic plan at your meeting in late August, objective number one under public safety was to get a report at this meeting on the status of the transition and also the dissolution process, and that is this report tonight. What we can tell you in terms of updates, job offers, and actually, this is even more recent information than was in your packet. We have now given final job offers to all of the Belmont-San Carlos sworn staff that are coming to San Carlos Fire. We've cleared all the interviews and all the backgrounds, and it's also worth noting that between San Carlos and Belmont, all of the sworn members of Belmont-San Carlos have an offer from either San Carlos or Belmont. Obviously, there are some individuals who are retiring or going to other agencies, but for those who are not of the sworn staff, they have all been offered positions in one or the other city, and in the case of San Carlos, those are all final offers as of today. In terms of recruiting for new employees, we have held those for the positions of firefighter, paramedic, and fire captain. It's worth noting that most of the paramedics who'll be joining San Carlos Fire are from other San Mateo County Fire and EMS agencies, which means they already have their paramedic certificate in this county. Also worth noting that most of the firefighters who'll be joining our new department, who are not from Belmont-San Carlos, are either current fire professionals from this county or from the nine-county Bay Area area, so while they, some of the names may not be familiar to those of us not in the fire service, for those who are, they're familiar names as well. I can tell you that in talking to the Redwood City Command Staff and also to Ms. Bendenhall and her staff, the folks who do the interviews, they're very impressed with the high quality of not only the folks coming over from Belmont-San Carlos, but also the employees from the other agencies, and they said that they are an excellent group, so we're looking forward to working with them. I think that as you just heard with Captain Ross's report, and we have a blended department between the sheriff's deputies and the former San Carlos police employees, I think you'll see pretty much the same flavor at the San Carlos Fire Department, where while a majority of the sworn staff in the new department will be from Belmont-San Carlos, we're also going to have fire professionals from around the county and around the Bay Area, so it'll have that blended feel, much as we have in our police services. Some of the other things we're doing in the transition area, the IT staff in both Redwood City and San Carlos have completed a high-speed interconnection between the two cities, and that will facilitate our work with the new department. We also have work underway with IT in terms of activating the city's network and phone system in the new department and the two fire stations. We're finalizing licensing all the necessary software for the new department and transferring the data files from the existing JPA. In terms of other things going on, we're ordering equipment, supplies, badges for the new department, and we've tentatively scheduled a swearing-in ceremony on October 1st at 7:30 at Laurel Street Station. Turning to the dissolution process, we're continuing to have weekly meetings at the staff level with the JPA staff and their legal counsel, and also with San Carlos and Belmont. We are in the process of looking at all of the current obligations and contracts at the JPA. Many of those contracts that are routine, that have a 30-day notice, the 30-day notice has been given, and those contracts are terminated as of the end of the fire JPA. In some instances, by the way, some of the contract for services are actually contract providers that work for the city of San Carlos. So in those instances, like elevated repair and air conditioning, we've simply transferred these two fire stations over to the city's existing contracts with these vendors. And workers' compensation, the so-called existing claims, or tail as it's called, turned out to be relatively small. It was less than $1 million. In fact, it was so small, we were unable to get anybody to bid on it. Wasn't large enough for their interest, so that's a good bit of news, and we're working on that. In terms of the self-funded dental plan, we had a little bit of a bump there in that the self-funded dental plan ended on August 30th, and so we were able to reach an informal agreement with the employee groups at Belmont-San Carlos to have a prorated benefit for the last 30 days, and so that's in place. In terms of equipment, inventory, and disposition, we're working with the three agencies on a list of specialized equipment, radios, and technologies that will be coming over to the two cities. There'll be a further refinement of that list this week with a subcommittee that consists of Deputy Chief Mopin representing San Carlos Fire, Gary Foth from the JPA, and former Chief Fry from Belmont Fire. And so hopefully by the end of this week, that will be resolved. In terms of other obligations and obligations that occur after the termination of the service date, the city managers will be meeting shortly to discuss options sort of post-service termination and how that might work. There's been some discussion about having a process where the two city managers from Belmont-San Carlos meet on a monthly or periodic basis to review the invoices and potentially to bring them back if there are major items. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and also, the other thing I thought I would do, if you're interested, bring this up, is if this will work, we'll show you the new logo in somewhat larger scale.
This better be good.
I was just going to say, well, perhaps there's not a copy of Acrobat loaded. Anyway, if there was, you'd see the larger logo.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we will go to council comments and questions. Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, are there any comments from council members? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Moore. Moving on to item 8C, report on hydrostatic pressure testing by PG&E. This will be done by Al Savay. I'd like to point out that Mr.
Here it is.
Oh.
There it is.
Mr. Lewis would like one, just to let you know.
I'd like a badge, not a logo.
And just to point out that Mr. Coogan is here from PG&E as well. So, thank you for coming. Mr. Savay, if you want to handle this report?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. This report is about PG&E safety testing of a line that goes from, a gas line that goes from Old County Road at Britton all the way up, past Alameda, De Las Pogus, past Crestview, and into the Pogus Open Space Reserve area. And the idea is, again, for safety testing of this big, long line. And it's called hydrostatic testing. And what they do is they bring in trucks and workers, and they stage them at various locations along the line, and then they take out the natural gas out of the line. And they provide an alternate way of providing gas services to the customers, so the customers won't notice anything. Then they let the gas out of the line, seal it at both ends, and clean it. And then, they fill it with water from big tanks that are trucked in. That water is then pressurized, and the line is tested. Again, they pressurize it not to 100% of the line pressure, but just enough to test its safety, see if there's any leaks or breakages. If there are leaks or breakages, then those leaks are repaired. Then the line is tested once again to see if it's safe. And then, following that, it's put back into operation. The testing would take place between September 21st through the 29th, and there would be three staging areas where people will see activity. One would be at Old County Road and Britton Avenue, right across from Pep Boys. There will be, some of the lane will be taken over by these big trucks, and you'll see workers there. And then, at Britton and Alameda, on the right-hand side, as you're going up the hill, you'll see a staging area there. There will be some workers. There will also be some valve work being done at some of these locations. So, some repairs being done at that time, too. And finally, at Britton and Milano Way, there will be some staging there as well. So, there, at two of the locations, I think, at Old County Road and Britton, and also at Britton and Alameda, there will be some disruption of traffic. The traffic won't have to stop necessarily, but you'll have to slow down as you go through the intersection. There will be workers there and directing traffic. PG&E has done some public outreach. They've sent notices to the citizens of San Carlos. They've also held a community meeting at the Presbyterian Church last week, which I attended and gathered up the materials from that meeting. And we sent that out on eNotifi this evening. Also, it's on the city's website along with this report. As the mayor mentioned, Jim Coogan is here from PG&E. He's their government relations representative, and he can answer any questions, and I can too. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. We'll open up public comment on this. Again, seeing none. Any questions from council members?
I just had one question. It really doesn't have anything to do with the hydrostatic testing, because I saw all this information. But if Mr. Coogan can, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, Jim, you don't have to answer the question now. There's a project going up on Crestview Drive that seemingly has gone on for a long time. I'm just curious, if you can just get back to me when and if it's ever going to be finished? It doesn't seem, it seems like they start, they stop, they start, they stop. And I'm sure there's reasons for that, but if you could just get back to me, I'd appreciate it. Other than that, that's great. Thank you very much.
Mr. West? Question is, you know, this is testing being done. At the same time while all this work is being done, any valve changes or movement towards automatic valve turnoffs?
Why don't you just come up, Jim?
Councilmember, we're going through and reviewing everything. A lot of the work that has to be done is taking a look at the valves themselves. And so, they're still going through the process of identifying where it makes sense to have those automated valves or remote shut-off valves. So, I can get back to you with more specific information.
But my understanding is, we don't have any automatic shut-off valves anywhere in the county, I believe, right? Was my understanding. And so, any, and I know the long-term goal in the studies that, of course, all came out, and Jackie Speer's office was very much pushing towards getting some automatic turnoffs also. I'd be interested in that status.
Okay. Great. Yeah, that's the case. We're going through and reviewing where the locations make sense.
No, I understand. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Will the testing take place during the weekend as well, or just during the weekdays?
The work is going to take place, it basically starts and it doesn't stop until we're done. So, there will be work over the weekends. We've actually had the request, and we're going to comply with it to make sure that any work that's done on weekends, when we're starting the work, if it's at all outside of the hours that have been set forth that people are expecting, we'll get notice out to the people who are in the general vicinity, so they're aware of it.
And, yeah, my mom's 83rd birthday. We got lots of family in town that weekend. I live near there. The question.
If we can, as a councilmember, maybe we can make an adjustment.
No, the only other question, it doesn't have to be too detailed, but you continue to provide the service by shutting down, but also shutting down that main line. Can you just briefly describe how that works?
Sure. We're very fortunate on the peninsula where there are lots of cross ties with other transmission line. And so, we are able to isolate different lines and still provide service through those cross ties, whether it's through Line 109 or 132, which run up the 280 corridor, or Line 101, which is along the 101 corridor.
Great. And if you guys discover problems, is this, also, the construction period allow enough time to fix any problems you might find? Or is that, would that, could it continue if you found some bigger issue?
Well, we fix anything that we find immediately. So, we have materials readily available, and we would not extend it beyond the end of October. We need to have the system back up and running by the end of October.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything? All right. Well, thank you very much, Jim.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Savay. Okay. Well, now, we're moving on to items nine, which is a public hearing, consideration of adopting a resolution approving San Carlos Fire Department master fee schedule for fiscal year 2011, 2012.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is a resolution to establish the master fee schedule for the Fire Department. As discussed earlier this evening, over the past few months, we've made great progress toward the establishment of our new department. In July, council adopted the fire code, and the next step in that process is to establish the master fee schedule. For the fire code, the Fire Marshal is responsible for carrying out the duties of the Fire Prevention Bureau. The duties include inspections and permits, fire safety, public education, and arson prevention. The functions of the Fire Prevention Bureau include the fire safety plan review, fire inspection of new and existing construction, consultation with prospective developers and builders on public safety issues, fire investigations, mitigating complaints and other fire hazards, fire public education, participation in community outreach programs, and the juvenile fire center intervention program. The duties of the staff include fire inspections, investigations, determining the cause and origin of fires, collecting and properly handling evidence, the ability to testify and present evidence in court, the ability to develop and implement community fire prevention programs, interpret and enforce applicable codes, ordinances, and laws, and knowledge of fire and life safety systems, including but not limited to sprinkler systems, extinguishers, and fire alarm systems. The fire code adopted on July 11th states that fees for permits shall be established by the city council. The fees will be set as a cost recovery for services to review and inspect the intended activities, operations, or functions stipulated by the code. The fee schedule before you tonight is very similar to the one that was used and that is in use with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. The fee schedule includes inspection fees for state-mandated annual inspections. These are all set at a flat rate. The fire code inspections related to occupancy classification and frequency, those are set at an hourly rate. Construction inspection fees for plan checks, fire alarm permits, and sprinkler systems, those are set to at the full cost of recovery for providing those services. Other fees include general services, such as copies of documents, appeals to city council, and return check fees. These have been set at the same rate as the other citywide fees already established on the existing schedule. And then, staff time consultation is available and will be billed at hourly rates. So, the next steps in the process are, if the resolution is approved tonight, the fees will go into effect on October 1st. The schedule will be posted to the website, and the billing will be done in accordance with the approved fees.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. Is there any public comment on item 9A? It's a quiet night. Seeing none, we will go to council questions. Mr. Lewis, do you have anything?
My question was, it was hard for me to figure out what percentage, what change do these represent from what the existing fees are? Is there a lot of variance between what the existing fees are at the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Resili?
There's no variance?
Very little.
I heard that. Very little.
Some of the hourly rates have changed, but our rates are lower.
Our rates? You mean the ones you're proposing here?
Yes.
Okay. So, they're lower by 3%, 5%, 20%?
It's a small percent. It's like a couple dollars here and there. I mean, very small.
Very small. I mean, I appreciate little can mean a lot to different folks.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. West? Mr. Rokat? Okay. And I have nothing either, so, we, oh, I'm sorry, I have to go backwards. We have to open. Caught you out of the corner of my eye, Mr. Williams. We have to open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I will entertain a motion on this resolution.
I'd make, I'll make a motion to, let me see, adopt the attached resolution approving the master fee schedule.
I gotta read it.
Where is it?
Oh, here it is. Resolution number 2011-83. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing approval of the Fire Department master fee schedule.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Rokat?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. Are you staying with us?
Yes, I am.
Moving on to item 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing a contract with the County of San Mateo for police dispatch services in the total amount of, oh, thank you very much, Chief, Deputy Chief, Fire Marshal. Thank you. 288,500 through the end of the fiscal year and authorizing the city manager to sign the contracts.
Yeah, I think you skipped an item.
Oh, 10A, aye, sorry. Oh, 10A, sorry, completely. New business, consideration of adopting the City of San Carlos strategic plan.
Speed it along. I tried to jump one.
Oh, you're moving, yeah.
No, it's just staff's taking all the time tonight.
Your vice clerk should be all over you.
Good evening again. Before you tonight is the city's new strategic plan. On Monday, August 29th, the city council met with the city manager and the department heads for the 12th time in a day-long facilitated discussion of the city's strategic issues and goals. The purpose of this process is to review the mission statement, vision statement, adopt new three-year strategic goals, and develop new six-month objectives. The mission statement, the City of San Carlos provides high-quality services and facilities in a fiscally sustainable, responsive, and friendly manner to foster a safe and healthy community. The vision statement is that by 2012, the City of San Carlos will be a vibrant and thriving home and destination for individuals, families, and businesses. Our core values are fiscal responsibility and sustainability, protecting our environment, strategic thinking and planning for the future, high ethical standards, community involvement, high-quality customer service, a strong sense of community, and public safety. Our three-year goals, and these are not in priority order, are to plan for and implement long-term financial sustainability, provide effective and sustainable public safety, manage effectively the infrastructure and facilities, enhance community awareness, involvement, and engagement, and preserve and enhance our distinct community character. So, council and staff worked together and created 43 new six-month objectives. The first five-year goal is to plan for and implement long-term financial stability, sustainability. The new four objectives are, by October 31st, we'll hold a city council study session regarding the potential elimination of the redevelopment agency. By 1215, we'll study the feasibility of changing to a program-based and two-year budget cycle, and we'll make a report to the city council. By February 15th, 2012, we'll be exploring the feasibility of shared services and facilities with other jurisdictions, and we'll present the findings to city council. And also, by February 15th, 2012, we'll create and present to the city council for action a process to protect RDA funding. The second goal is to provide effective and sustainable public safety. The 11 new objectives here are, and three, the first three have been or will be presented at tonight's meeting. The report to the city council and the dissolution process and the current fire JPA, a report to council on an update on the police services. And right after this, present a plan to city council on moving the police dispatch to the county. On October 1st, we'll begin the fire services for the new San Carlos Fire Department. In October and through February 2012, we'll present monthly updates to city council on the progress of the San Carlos Fire Department. By November 1st, we'll identify and provide emergency preparedness training to those employees who need it. And by December 1st, we'll present to the city council for direction, possible fire station sharing between San Carlos and the County of San Mateo. By February 15th, we'll hold a tabletop exercise for key city staff. Also, by February 15th, we'll increase community enrollment in the San Mateo County Alert Program by 50%. By February 15th, we'll form an Emergency Operations Center Committee, and we'll update the EOC. And a future objective is to report to the city council on developments regarding the regional fire model. Our third goal is to manage effectively the infrastructure and facilities. The 14 new objectives here include, by October 1st, the completion of the L'Oriola Park Playground and the ribbon cutting. By November 15th, we'll recommend to the city council for action, options for the library or interior renovation project. By December 15th, we'll update the city council on the shared track option and capacity study and its impact on the San Carlos as part of the high-speed rail project. By December 15th, we'll present options to the city council for action on organization alternatives for our Public Works Department. By January 1st, we'll invite at least three community organizations to participate in the current project to identify barriers to city services and programs for people with disabilities. By January 15th, we'll present recommendations to the city council for the Kiwanis Building at Burton Park. By February 15th, we'll develop an urban canopy program and present that to city council for consideration. By February 15th, we'll update the parking master plan. And also, by February 15th, we'll complete the draft of a sewer master plan and present that to city council. By February 15th, we'll conduct a feasibility study on the use of synthetic turf at Crestview Park. We'll create and implement a new capital budget process. We'll explore the feasibility of a shared corporation yard with another jurisdiction. We'll present to city council for consideration a civic facilities master plan. And we will also review citywide parking issues, including time-limited parking in residential areas, abandoned vehicle reinforcement, and make a recommendation to city council for direction. Our fourth goal is to enhance community awareness, involvement, and engagement. This goal has eight new objectives. By October 1st, present to the city council a policy on electronic communications and devices. By October 1st, present to city council a, for consideration, a city manager newsletter for distribution to the community. By November 11th, analyze and present options for public kiosks at strategic city locations. And by December 1st and February 15th, provide community education program regarding the city's new permit processing and ongoing development services. By December 15th, we'll schedule and hold two public focus groups to gather input about[1783.53] By December 15th, we'll schedule and hold two public focus groups to gather input about the desired city website features. By December 15th, we'll hold the first quarterly meeting with representatives of key community volunteer groups and service clubs. By January 1st, we'll go live with the new permitting software. By February 15th, we'll present to city council for consideration a redesign of the city's website. And our final goal is to present and enhance our distinct community character. The six new objectives here are, by October 1st, present to city council for consideration a declaration accepting this charter for compassion. By February 15th, identify at least 10 volunteers to help monthly with trash removal at public gathering places. By February 15th, develop and implement a kudos program to recognize employees that identify fixes to problems for maintenance or processes. By February 15th, develop an enhancement of the strategic planning process to track progress on ongoing citywide projects. Also, on February 15th, we'll present to city council for action proposed voluntary mandatory programs regarding styrofoam food containers and plastic shopping bags. And a future objective is to present to city council for consideration a comprehensive strategy to preserve and enhance the downtown district infrastructure. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. Is there any public comment on item 10A? Okay, seeing none, we will go to questions from council members? No questions, as we're all there. Are there any comments from council members? Can we have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the City of San Carlos strategic plan?
Second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to item 10A, aye, consideration of adopting a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011, 2012 adopted budget by $25,000 for the cost of publishing and distributing of a city manager newsletter. Mrs. Mendenhall?
Yes, as you just adopted the strategic plan, one of the new items was to create a city manager newsletter and have it distributed three times a year. The estimated cost for that will be $25,000, and the resolution before you tonight is to amend the budget to account for those costs.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on item 10A, aye? No? Is there any questions from council members? Mr. Grocott?
Questions?
Yeah.
Of staff?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Any other, any questions? Okay, now, now we'll go to comments. Mr. Grocott?
Okay. I'm looking at this figure, the 25,000, and I'm not sure I'm ready to go there yet for a newsletter. And I'm thinking there might be other ways to, to do this that doesn't involve $25,000. We've got the e-notify program, and something could just simply go out in that manner so we don't have, you know, reduce the cost. There's also that, you know, we've got our TV station. We could do something that's broadcast, that's, you know, a message that's recorded and so forth. That might cost a little bit, but I think it would probably cost, I don't know if that's been looked into, but perhaps it would cost less. I think there's, I just think there's other ways to do this without incurring mailing cost and printing cost and so forth.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grocott. Any other comments?
So is the $25,000, is it three times a year, is that primarily the, for postage distribution, is that where the, is that where the cost is?
So it would be, the postage would be like $15,000, the, the, the...
Can we get the breakdown?
Printing would be 2,000? I mean, where's the 25 coming from?
Well, we have a number of options. So we can do a four-page newsletter, we could do an eight-page newsletter, we could do folded, we could do flat. Depending on what we decide to go for, the cost for, for each newsletter would be between 6 and $9,000, or 6 and, yeah, $9,000. And the cost of that includes production and postage, so the production of the newsletter.
Okay. Ms. Royce?
Yeah, so I'm trying to go back in history. I believe we had a partnership with the Chamber in which, this goes back about 10 years to 15 years, and we would do two or three a year in which we would talk about development in San Carlos, or, you know, basically what's going on around town. So when I see this, you know, I, I think we, we have tremendous opportunity to increase the communication. I mean, I'm not sure how many people know Andy Klein is our mayor right now.
I think 28,000.
But there's, there's all sorts of things that people, you know, want to know what's going on. We've made significant changes in government on how we operate, and so it's really time to communicate. So my thought was, not into the finance area, maybe, you know, but to separate from Matt's point, maybe there is some opportunity to, you know, one out of the three partnerships, or, or a little bit of, of each, of, of the newsletters includes the Chamber and their communication, because they're such an integral part of, of what's going on around town, and included with, with the city manager's activity. Again, I'm just going back to history on something that we did for a while, and then we stopped doing it because of cost, and I see those two players being very successful in communicating to our city.
The other place I thought you might be going is to maybe do one a year that is full production, and then maybe the other two are e-communication, something like that, and we can approve a lesser amount, because it does seem like a fair amount of money for them, an amount of postage, and you just wonder how many are actually going to get read or whatever. It might be nice to qualify, because I believe the city manager having a higher profile is great for us. We've talked about that for years, and I think it's a great way to directly inform rather than via a service organization or the Chamber or whatever, exactly communicate what the city's up to. I think, I really, I strongly believe this is a great thing to do. It is a big number, and I just wonder if it's three times a year, whether or not we might want to, you know, if, depending on how council feels, I, I would be up for considering a little bit lesser amount and go with one, and maybe the other two, or we do another way other than postage, if that's where a lot of the money's tied up.
Okay, I'm going to put in my comments really quickly to kind of go a little bit against what Mr. Lewis says. I don't actually think $25,000 is a lot of money, because you're essentially spending 33 cents per newsletter, per person in, in the town, and I don't think that's a really big number. The one complaint that I think a lot of us here, all across the board, is no one knows what's going on. We've done a lot to change our city, and right now, we have a lot of citizens who don't really understand exactly where we are in everything in regards to fire, in regards to police, in regards to staff, parks. Some people still think the parks are closing, and that was two years ago. So it's, you know, I think it's one of those things we have to get out there in the community with, and, and I agree with Mr. Grocott, there are other ways to do it. I think we should do it all. I think the city manager's newsletter is a mailing newsletter, but I also think you send it out as an e-notify, you put it on the website as a link, you get it everywhere you possibly can, and you hit the people multiple times. Any marketing person will tell you, you need to email, you need to mail, you need to Twitter and do all of that stuff. You need to hit them on multiple ways. So I, I'm more than okay with $25,000. Try to save some money, but don't go cheap on it. Make sure it gets out there, and everyone gets the information, and you hit them every way possible. That's where I would go with that.
I guess the only thing I, you know, speaking of Mr. Lewis's comment, I'm not sure what the, and I guess it's impossible problem, or I say, close to impossible to quantify whether anybody reads this. Maybe the last line of the, of the newsletter should say, "If you read this and you call me back," you know, and you send in, or call me in the next 24 hours, you win a Chatski or something, because I don't know, honestly, who's gonna, you know, no, I mean, I'm just saying, because you have no idea who's going to read this. I mean, people get mail all day long, and, and I don't know how it's going to go out. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to get involved in the details of all that, that professionals can do that, but, but I just don't know what the, what the, how, how will we know that it's doing any good? You know, that, I mean, that's why, I don't have a problem sending the first one out. I think it's a great idea to send one out right away, or within a few months, or the first year, whatever we decide to do. But if there's some way to figure out if anybody read it, and, and then I'm more than willing to go with the extra dollars. But otherwise, I, I'm concerned that all of a sudden you, we create this, and it's just another piece of paper that somebody gets. And I, I don't know. It's hard, it's hard to know. I mean, that's, that's, that's the problem I have. I worry, I guess I, I sort of say, let's, I want to do it once, for sure. And then if there's some way to quantify it, or some way to get it back, then I'm willing to go and spend more money and keep doing it.
I think Bob Bing's had a good idea. Let's try it once, and try to measure the value.
I, I think my two senses that you need to do this over a longer period of time to really judge the value.
Okay.
I think we need to, if we're going to do a newsletter, we ought to produce a nice, high-quality newsletter. It ought to have important, relevant content, and we've discussed a few things tonight, such as, you know, some of the things that Chief Roth has talked about in terms of, you know, locking your doors and not leaving items visible in your vehicles and those kinds of thefts. The hydrostatic testing would have been a great item to include in a newsletter, because we're getting lots of calls. The recology rollout, we have these big events that generate a lot of calls, and we usually have a sense of what they are, that we can put this out. Having worked in other cities producing high-quality newsletters, I can tell you that they do work, and that, and that they can, over time, become an institution that people will refer to, or know to go to, to look for. Probably the closest thing in my tenure in San Carlos that we did, and this was sort of maybe before the website and e-communication really blossomed fully, was the resident newsletter. When we mailed that large, when we put that booklet together and mailed that large packet of information out to people, this community loved it. The realtors loved it, and it became something that people talked about, and when you talked to your neighbor and they had a question, they would say, "Oh, have you never heard of the resident handbook?" And that's, I think, what we need to have as a goal for the newsletter, to have this become a resource that residents know to tell other residents to be on the lookout for.
Yeah, and I gotta say, I would really support this for the first year, and, and go for the 25,000. I, I do think that we're sort of underrepresented out there. I hear more people that have no idea what we're up to, rather than people getting bombarded with information from us. And, and, you know, I really feel like the thing that we all seek, which is community feedback, is means we need to inform people, and when things come up, what, we always hear what the government doesn't do, or what we're doing negatively, and this is a way just to put out information, so everybody really is aware what, what is provided. So I would support it. I would say that Bob's point about how measurable is it, let's at the end of the year, try to, try to measure it, and let's see how we can get back from staff and say we think we're getting saturation.
All right.
Okay. Ms. Royce?
Two things come to mind from the comments I've heard. One is there may be some commercial opportunity to pay for this by including advertisement in the newsletter, advertisement opportunities, and that might be able to, be a way to draw down some of the cost. Number two, I do think Mr. Grisilli's idea, you know, this is often done, you look at radio stations and magazines and so forth, they incorporate ways into their, into their communications, ways to know whether or not they have readership. And I think coming up with something, whether it's cute or serious or whatever, to know whether or not you're, you're getting, you know, whether or not what you're sending out is getting read and, and looked at, and whether or not you're communicating is, is useful. Last thing is, I, I would think that looking for ways to offset some of the costs by, you know, if you're, like, people who get e-notify, they may accept that, those are people that are tuned in already, and they may accept that as a communication device from the city manager, and you can draw down your costs a little bit by not mailing to those households. You know, and there are people in this community, you know, we always talk about how we're a green community, there may be people who would prefer, they'd be a little insulted if they got something in the mail that was on paper and print and so forth. They would rather get it through an, an e-program and save paper, so we might want to look at some of that.
I was just going to make a, make a motion.
Please do.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 2011-...
84?
84. Authorization of City Council, City of San Carlos amending fiscal year 2011, 12 adopted budget for the cost of publishing and distributing a city manager newsletter. But I, I would think I should, I, Mr. Rubens, if I can put on that also, that we're going to, we're going to do this for one year. I mean, I'd assume that it would come back to us again for, it would be in the budget or do something again. I'm just, I want, I go infinitum, I'm just saying that maybe that doesn't need to be part of the motion. It'll, it'll be part of the budget, so.
It's, it's, yeah, the motion states it's part of this year's.
Okay, just this year's budget. Okay, fine. That's the motion.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli? Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Moving on to item 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing a contract with the County of San Mateo for police dispatch services in the total amount of 288,500 through the end of fiscal year and authorizing the city manager to sign the contract. Chief Rothis?
Good evening, Mayor Klein, members of the city council. Just by way of background, if you recall, back in November of 2006, the city was struggling with their budget still at that time, and had made quite a few changes in the city to help with the budget crisis. One of those was the consideration and eventual outsourcing of police dispatch to the city of Menlo Park, and that occurred in November of 2006. And we have been dispatched by Menlo Park since that time, currently tonight, Menlo Park is dispatching for us. The result of that move saved, saved the city about 1.2, 1.25 million dollars or more than that since that contract was signed, and we've received, I want to say, excellent dispatch services from Menlo Park. They've done a great job for us. Now that the transition has occurred with respect to the sheriff's office, we, we went to the sheriff's office last year, and it so happens that the contract with the city of Menlo Park is expiring in November of this year, so the expiration's coming up. And why the timing is important of that is that the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office uses one and only one dispatch service provider, that is a department, another, a separate county department called Public Safety Communications, and they are a separate county department. The director of that department is Jamie Young, and Jamie's in the audience tonight. She's here in case you have any questions, just for information. Jamie is also a San Carlos resident, so it's nice to have her here, and thanks for coming, Jamie. So what we're proposing is to go ahead and, and contract with the San Mateo County Public Safety Communications for the rest of this fiscal year. Unfortunately, we're not able to get a contract, a cost for future years yet. It's very important that Public Safety Communications, if we go ahead and go with them, have some time to assess our call volume, to assess our telephone volume, and, and what that's doing, so they can figure out how we can best share a channel in a way that's economically to our advantage. I do have assurances and know from working with the county that they'll make every, every effort to do so, but in any case, it's going to be less cost than Menlo Park has charged. We're convinced that we're going to be able to, to do that out in future years. So that's the report that I have tonight. I just want to say, you know, Public Safety Communications is the dispatch provider for all of the San Mateo County Fire Departments. They also provide dispatch for other police agencies, the former Happin Bay Police Department, East Palo Alto Police Department, they dispatch for Millbrae and others. They're an award-winning communication center with the, with the work they've done in emergency medical dispatch, and also some cutting-edge work they're doing to standardize receiving police calls that they think will increase community safety and officer safety on calls. So that is a great comm center, and we'll be well-served by them.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Is there any public comment on item 10B? Seeing none, we will go to council questions?
I have a quick question. Chief, I see that the savings here is estimated to be this year about $157,000, but these are sort of combined numbers.
Correct.
Mix and match. I would, I would assume that that number next year will be far less than that. But it's still going to be a savings, but it's not going to be $157,000.
You know, we're not, I'm not sure, unfortunately, I can't tell you that. It could be more than that. I mean, the annualized rate at that, right, that we're paying, that we pay for go-to-county communications, the annualized rate this year would be 437?
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at, that I don't see here what the annualized rate would be.
The annualized rate this year would be 437, but we shouldn't use that, I don't want to put counsel in a position to use that to say what will be in future years. I'll certainly do my best to get that.
No, I understand that.
And so...
So that's, you answered my question. It could theoretically be more. I didn't see the annualized rate, I just saw this melt, and I can certainly appreciate we're going to save money this time.
Yes.
And that's why I was looking to see, but I couldn't discern from the numbers how I could break it out. So you answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Grocott?
Just in terms of how this works operationally, can you tell us which phone numbers go to dispatch right now?
Well, in terms of operationally, there'll be no changes that way. The phone numbers that go to dispatch now will go to dispatch then. So it's the 911 lines, our business lines, certain will be, some of those will be transferred to dispatch after hours. We're still working on where those lines will go. But there'll be no changes in telephone numbers, and so we won't really have to worry about that aspect at all. Operationally, one thing that will change is that we currently share a primary frequency with Belmont Police. So we'll be sharing now with our surrounding sheriff's office units. And so we'll have better operational efficiency that way, but no phone number changes.
And so in terms of that, one of the lines I was thinking of is the, you know, you have a non-emergency call, but you do need to get in touch with the police, and you don't want to use, you don't want to tie up 911.
Right.
And so you dial the 802 number.
Correct, same number you're dialing. You would dial the same number.
Okay, and that, on occasion, goes to, actually goes to the business office or always goes to the business?
If you dial during business hours, if you dial the business line during business hours, it goes to the business office. After hours, it goes to communications. That's where it currently goes. Right now, what happens is the sheriff's office actually has a 24-hour-day records bureau. So, we're trying to decide right now, after hours, do we shift the calls to records or do we shift them to communications like we do now? And so we just haven't worked out that final detail yet. But at any rate, they will be answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Chief, so that, just to clarify one thing, this dispatch is already our dispatch for our fire department in San Carlos?
Correct. That will be correct.
Good. That's all I need to know. Well, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2011?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, authorizing a contract with the County of San Mateo for police dispatch services in the total amount of $288,500 through the end of this fiscal year and authorizing the city manager to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you, chief.
Okay, moving on to item 10C. Consideration of adopting an electronic communications policy for city council and council-appointed commissions. City Clerk Bowland?
I've got a 45-minute PowerPoint, if you would just indulge me here.
Make it about 45 seconds, that'll be...
Forty-five seconds? Okay, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Christine Bowland, city clerk. For consideration this evening is adoption of an electronics communication policy for the council and council-appointed commissions. This item was a carryover from your strategic plan six months ago, and we forwarded it to the August 29th strategic plan. It was also the subject of a civil grand jury report in 2007, which I've included in your package. Where it was really prompted was, last year, there was a tweet that kind of went out before a city council member, so it prompted the review of the issue. Last month, staff met with a subcommittee of the council consisting of Mayor Klein and former mayor, councilmember Brad Lewis, to discuss the issues, pros and cons, and to craft such a policy. So as a result of that, we went to work ahead and drafted the policy before you tonight. The highlights include encouraging council members to use our city hall email addresses, accounts, to communicate to and from the public, if at all possible. It discourages the use of electronic devices by council or commission members during public meetings, subject to the Brown Act, for sending texts, tweets, emails, so forth, from or to members of the public. And of course, this would exempt communication from your family members or significant others because they might want to tweet you to tell you how good you look on TV, or in case of emergency. We do appreciate councilmember Royce's wife last month when she said the Comcast went down, so that actually was appreciated. It allows the use of the Internet for researching items of interest to the council or commission during a meeting. And finally, addresses e-communications of a confidential nature and prohibits the forwarding of them. I'm here, and here I'm happy to answer questions of council.
Okay, first we'll take any public comment on item 10C. Seeing none. Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Grocott?
Questions?
No.
No, hi.
Just comments.
Nope. Any comments from the council? Mr. Grocott? Do you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I had a couple of things in here. The idea of going on the web during a council meeting, I was a little troubled by that because I see our role as, kind of like jurist sometimes, and the idea is to be looking at the information that we all share together, that we all have and have access to. You know, like, when you're on a jury, you're not supposed to bring in outside material and consider that as part of the discussion. And here, I think, in our case, if one of us has some outside material, like, for instance, let's put a face on this. Let's say we were, when we were looking at turf issue, somebody might have done a little research on turf and some kind of artificial turf. What I've always tried to practice, if I've got something that I have, that I've looked at, either to share with the city clerk in advance so the city clerk can disperse it to everybody, just as information only, or bring it with me and have five copies. Doesn't always happen. Sometimes you get busy and you show up at the meeting and you only have it for yourself and you try to pass it out. And I've done that and I've been accused of, well, that's not really fair, we don't all have it. And that's the way I kind of feel about having, you know, if one of us is sitting here with a laptop and we've got, you know, access to the web and we're looking at things during a meeting and making that part of our decision, and, you know, the two dinosaurs here, Bob and I, don't have our laptops.
I remember that remark.
Yeah, I know. You know, it's just, it puts you in an unfair position if you don't have the information at hand also. And so I would be interested to hear, that's my point of view, I'd be interested to hear.
I tend to agree with you to some extent, and that's why maybe if it needs to be tweaked, just to the point of, if someone goes on the web and gets some information about what we're talking about, that they have to share it with all of us. Otherwise, you know, I mean, it seems pretty reasonable. They don't have to necessarily print it, but they just said, "Look, I found this on the web and this is what it says and you have to speak." Again, I'm not as technically oriented as some of my colleagues, but I'm just saying that, to me, would solve the problem, or solve the issue.
I thought the language is, was, allows use of the Internet for researching items of interest to the council during the meeting was good language because it's sort of, there's sort of a shared intent. In other words, you know, we have a question, we're sort of debating, we can get a quick answer and discuss it. It's not meant to be a private communication or, you know, it's meant to be something as a, it's a tool, a research tool that we can actively use. And so where it's of interest to the council to use it, we should have access and use it.
Mr. Royce?
Also, I think Mr. Griselli's point about everybody having access to all the information at the same time. I have a pretty current example, going back four months ago, where we had a large audience, so there's a lot of pressure because the place is full, and a lot of their analysis was based on cell strength, the strength of the signal. And I knew enough to question that because a lot of the signaling, those bars that you get, is basically a lot of firmware and it's, the way it's built in there, you could have it say whatever you want. And based on manufacturer, it varies all over the place. And I wanted to bring that question up to ask whether or not, if I had Google and I could research it with a quick review, you would find that out. So we were making a really important decision that night based on false data, and yet I didn't have the information, even though only one or two of us will have the information. I would have to bring that up and share that information with everybody to make a decision. And another quick example is Google Map. How many times are we talking about something and I want to see the picture, I want to see the imprint on the tree, et cetera, et cetera? I think data, information is good as long as we're fair with it.
Right. I also think, you know, it may be that the implication may also be that, you know, in the, if we could have a Google Maps reference where we're looking at something real quick, you could pull it up that if it came up here, we should be able to project it. So, public can see it, council can see it. So it's, again, it's meant to be a research tool, a tool that we use to our advantage, not to use for like an information slam on somebody and to keep privately. So, the fact is, it exists, it can help us in real-time fix something. So that was the intent, mind that.
Well, I don't know. I'm still not comfortable with it because we don't have, if we had currently the technology in place, the infrastructure of technology in place, not that it's not available, but, you know, some councils, the city issues to the council members a laptop. And if we all sat here with a laptop and, you know, you know, fact of the matter is I've seen this in action, when, because Mr. Ahmad, when he was with us, you know, was an avid user of the web and would often come to council meetings with a laptop and would whip up information. And quite frankly, you know, I understand where he was coming from and he was, you know, very much tuned into that technology and so forth, but at times, for me, it made me feel uncomfortable because he would come up with information and I don't have that information, it's not up there. So what I'm saying is that if we had that, if we all had laptops and, you know, Randy could say, "Well, I was just looking at this," and we all could see it and it was up there and the public could see it and know what we're talking about, because that's how it is right now with paper. You know, people, if they care to get these agendas, even the public can look at what we're looking at. Or oftentimes, you know, when staff is presenting something to us, it's on an overhead. And so the public can see it and everybody knows what we're talking about. I still feel uncomfortable with having a policy that allows us individually to access the web during a council meeting when that's not what we all have.
My only two cents is, we don't have a policy right now that doesn't allow us to do that, so you would want to have to create a policy that would say people aren't allowed to access the Internet while they're up here. And I would have a major issue with prohibiting people from seeking information outside there. I don't think it's something that someone would use to hide. I think they would say, "Oh, hey, I looked this up, here's what I'm hearing." But I mean, in all fairness, it's, we get that all the time where someone gets lobbied by someone else, and they don't lobby all five of us, they'll go to their one person on the council and tell them the facts that they believe, and that's not something we always share between each other. I mean, no matter what, we don't come in here without hearing something. It's, it seems a little weird to say that we're jurists, because jurists aren't supposed to go out and talk in public about what they talk about before they come here, but we all do. We all count, we all call the people we talk to on a regular basis. If it's a development issue, we talk to developers, we talk to people in neighborhoods, and we don't share that with each other. We use those as ways for us to get a feeling for what's actually going on, and we don't report all of those to each other. So I just don't see prohibiting web access. And I agree, though, maybe we do need to look at when we redo the council chambers of enabling all council members to have that availability. But with that being said, I don't think there's any reason to prohibit the use of information or the attempt at getting information. I think it just makes us a stronger, more knowledgeable council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
When your comments are done, I think we'd like to jump in here with the city attorney real quick.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I think you're referring to item 3G. Is that the item that you're referring to where it talks about electronic communication? Because 3G talks about an exception of the Internet for research of timely and pertinent issues. Is that the item we're talking about?
Yeah.
There's a distinction between the two different matters you might be hearing on the, at the council level. You might be hearing a quasi-judicial matter where it is important that all the information that you use as part of your decision-making process be disclosed. And if there is an exception for Internet research of pertinent and timely issues, you'd want to make sure that at that meeting you would disclose, "Hey, I saw this on the Washington Post," or whatever resource you're looking at. You'd want to disclose that as part of your decision-making process. One, so that other council members could understand the information you're bringing to the table, and two, to avoid the appearance of bias. You don't want to be accused of being biased because you read something on the Internet and, which may or may not be true.
But that's the same if we read it in paper form as well.
Right. But this is just something that's contemporaneous that you, that's the distinction. If it's instantaneous, if it's something that is not instantaneous, it's a little different. So I think that's the issue. In some city councils, like I think Redwood City to the south, all the council members have their iPads and they have potentially an easy way to say, "This is what I'm looking at," and others can look at it. We don't have that technology here at this time. But I think that's, those are the issues about disclosing. But if it's not a quasi-judicial matter and it's a legislative act, the rule's different, that is where you can bring your opinions and conclusions and bring those to bear in making what amounts to a legislative decision. So, in that case, the research of a pertinent issue may be consistent with your thinking. I think it's best practice to disclose your, to the extent you can, why you're making a decision, but when it's a legislative act, it's not as important in that respect. So, and my recommendation, we could add a sentence to that policy item to make that distinction, that we could just say the information will be shared if there's something that is part of your decision-making process. We don't have to make a distinction between legislative and quasi-judicial. We could if that's the pleasure of the council.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Nope. Make a motion. Okay. Mr. Griselli?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2011?
Well, that's okay, we can second it and still have discussion.
Eighty-six?
Eighty-six?
Resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, adopting electronic communication policy for city council and council-appointed commissions. And I concur with Mr. Rubens, what he said, to add a sentence, you know, basically that it's, just to make sure that everybody understands it's shared with everybody.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now more discussion. Mr. Royce?
Yeah, just two points here before we vote. Actually, Ms. Bowland brought this item out where usually two or three times a year, my wife has texted me for the reason that either someone called her or emailed her that Comcast sound was out, or that the server's down, so Internet access was not there. And I'm comfortable just, you know, leaving this the way this is, but I would like to have staff just kind of look at some options on our control there so that when there is no service, you know, do they call the TV room or do they call? We don't want them calling you, probably, but we need to have some kind of backup so that we know that we're, you know, not, we're going like this and you can't hear me. Okay. So, beyond that. The other item, and I had a chance to, I think, save some time in talking to Ms. Bowland, where under general procedures and the use, there's some wording in there that talks about discouraging and whenever possible. And what I'm referring to is we're talking about, and I concur that we use our city hall electronic system for the communication. And like all of us have Yahoo accounts or Gmail accounts where people will address city business through those accounts. And one of the things that I've done over the last couple of years in the spirit of the Brown Act and making data available, if someone addresses me on one of these personal accounts, like my Gmail account, I will always respond back to them, "Got your message." I may respond with a message that, you know, and give them a paragraph. But what I do in all cases, if it's city's business, I actually BCC my city email account. And so in the discussion with Christine, I asked her about that. Basically, the advantage is she not only gets all the activity in my city account, any item that I consider business-related in my personal account gets all CC'd and archived in the records that you keep for seven years or...
Two years.
Three years.
That's correct.
And I want to clarify that in the description of 3B, that, you know, even though it says to encourage us and do all this other stuff, that there is the opportunity to actually provide more data than what we normally would need to do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that in what we're voting for.
Okay. Mr. Grocott?
Yeah, and a question regarding, one of the things I, you know, I'm, again, a dinosaur, so I have AOL. And what I've done with that is I have, you know, a personal AOL account, I have a business AOL account, I've got one for bicycle stuff, just trying to segment my life. And one of them is my council mat at AOL. And that's really useful for me because that's easily accessible and open all the time for me on my desktop. And even, like, my communication sometimes with Jeff or Christine or sometimes among council members is through that because it's quick and easy for me. Even today, tonight, one of my habits is, before going to a council meeting, I always go to my city e-mail address to see if there's, you know, any last-minute issues that the public's concerned about before I go to a council meeting. Tonight, I went to check in, and of course, we've got this new system with the Outlook, and doggone, if I don't have to put in, again, the user, not just the password, but the username and the password, which is, I mean, it sounds like a small thing, but like with my AOL, I just, you know, either I just leave it open or I know my password really quick and I throw it in there and bang, I'm on there. So, I don't know if there's something we can do to make that more easily accessible something we can do to make that more easily accessible, because right now, the way that's set up, I have to click that this is a private computer, there's a statement on there, which we haven't even talked about, about, you know, the policies of using your own private computer and isn't, you know, hooked up to a network, I guess, and so forth. Mine isn't, but, you know, those are things we haven't even discussed, and it's on there. So there needs to be some way, I think, this is what's always discouraged me over the years from using my Outlook more exclusively, is it's those extra steps you have to go through each time. And, you know, you have to either remember both your username and your password. It's just a bit of a hassle. And there's a question in there, and that is, with this policy, are we not permitted still to, you know, if I want a quick answer from Jeff, I'm going to use my council mat account to do that if that's permissible. If, or I guess one of the things I could do is like what Randy, and I've made a practice of that, too, what Mr. Royce is talking about, as much as possible. A lot of times I'll BCC my city council account, especially if a citizen write me about something, I'll answer them back, but I'll BCC. So it goes, Christine gets a copy of it. But if someone could update us on that.
It just says to discourage, it doesn't prohibit. So
Right, I'm aware of that.
You're BCCing yourself, that we're not telling people not to use their personal address. We would just prefer it's on the city address. But if it's, if it's that much of a hassle, just, yeah, as long as we, the city gets an electronic copy, it really doesn't make much of a difference.
And by the way, you could actually set a filter up so that it automatically goes to your account, and you'll never have to read it, but it's archived in a file. Sounds like Randy's offering to go by your house sometime next week.
And help you out. Okay.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to item 10D, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing part-time employee salary and benefit resolution. Mrs. Mendenhall, welcome back.
Good evening. So before you tonight is the salary and benefits resolution for the part-time employees. The resolution before you recommends a 5% reduction in total compensation equating to approximately $20,000 in savings. Some of the highlights of this agreement are a 5% reduction in base salary. Non-mandated PERS benefits such as vacation, sick, and holiday pay will no longer be provided to new hires as of September 1st. However, the existing part-time benefited employees will continue to receive the following benefits: PERS retirement membership, PERS health benefit, prorated sick upon one year of employment, five prorated holidays per year, and a prorated vacation leave upon three years of employment. All existing part-time employees with mandated PERS benefits prior to September 1st who do not have the health benefits and such, but if they are reclassified to the benefited category in the near future or in the future, they'll be eligible for the existing part-time benefits. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. Is there any public comment on item 10D? Again, seeing none, we'll go to council questions. Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none. Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. We will go to comments or a motion. Are there any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number 2011-87, authorization of the city council, the city of San Carlos adopting the part-time salary and benefit resolution.
Second that. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to item 10E, consideration of authorizing a shared services agreement with San Mateo County for code enforcement services with the city of San Carlos. Mr. Valley?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. Chris Valley, building official. As you'll recall, as you'll recall, council approved a code enforcement position to be funded in an amount not to exceed $50,000 as part of the current operating budget. As a result, an RFP for municipal code enforcement services was released June 8th. Two private firms responded to the RFP in addition to the San Mateo County Building and Planning Department. The Code Enforcement Services Selection Committee interviewed two of the three respondents, and as a result of those interviews, we are recommending to council a shared services agreement with the San Mateo County Planning and Building Department to provide code enforcement services for the city. The shared services agreement is suggested or proposed to be for two years initially, then renewed in one or two-year increments afterward. Complaints will be prioritized by me, the building official, and relayed to the county for investigation. There'll be regular interaction with the building official and county code compliance officer as to the status of assigned complaints. The position will provide approximately 16 to 20 hours per week of code enforcement services, maintaining our not-to-exceed amount of $50,000 per year. The building division will continue to address some complaints as necessary, while the county will be utilized to address complaints that are more time-consuming. The deputy director, Steve Monowitz, will manage the code compliance staff assigned to provide code enforcement services for the city. A specific code compliance officer will be assigned to the city, and county code compliance supervisor will provide direction and assistance to the code compliance officer and ensure backup staff is available in the event of the absence of that particular officer. The intent of this shared services program is to build a partnership that will enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of both San Mateo County and the city of San Carlos code enforcement programs, similar to our efforts in police and fire. Recommended changes to the city's administrative citation ordinance will be brought forward at a later date that will dovetail with improvements the county is proposing to make as well in their administrative citation ordinance. The final agreement for the shared services agreement will be, the final agreement for the shared services will be reviewed by San Mateo Council, our city attorney, and then ultimately signed and approved by the, our city manager. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And again, I have Steve Monowitz here with the county, if you have any questions with the county, and
Okay. Is there any public comment on item 10E? Seeing none, we'll go to questions. I'm seeing none from my gentleman to the right. Mr. Grocott, do you have anything?
I do, because, you know, years ago, I sat with Mr. Eaton when he was on council, and we reviewed the operations, if you will, of the building department. And one of the major complaints we had at the time was that code enforcement was too heavy-handed and seemed completely unfriendly in a town that tends to be friendly. And so if Mr. Valley could speak to us about that, I don't want to get into that situation again where we were having people complaining to us that, you know, it felt like we had people driving through the neighborhoods just looking for opportunities to do a gotcha. And that was really uncomfortable to take those complaints as a council member, and we tried to deal with that in the report. I don't want to get into a situation where we're signing a contract and we're back into the same miredness we were before. So if you could address those comments.
That wouldn't be, let's just say, wouldn't be a step backwards, back to those days, if you will.
Yeah.
Where the complaints we would be investigating would overall be submitted complaints by the public. So there's a, we'd be responding to complaints received. We're not, we wouldn't necessarily be, you know, patrolling neighborhoods, so to speak.
Right.
So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question well, or
Yeah, it does, because I think the complaints we got were that people felt like, you know, gosh, if I, if I happen to leave some gravel out in my driveway, I'm going to get investigated for doing work without a permit or something. And it just left folks
Well, the difference between gravel in a driveway and a vacant house that is rundown and truly needs attention, there's, there needs to be a certain reason applied to, you know, what we go after and so forth. So I think the county will serve our needs in that realm.
Well, and it's complaint-driven, is what you're saying.
The, when we're out in the field and we see work being done without a permit, that typically isn't always complaint-driven.
Yeah, well, that's different, though. But we're talking about, you know, the worry that you're just going to be going after your average citizen who's maybe not really breaking the rules, just had done something, you know, that your average person would do. But people doing work unpermitted, that's different. We all understand that.
Yeah. I don't think that'd be a good use of the county's time. Again, I, when I say, you know, that I'll be prioritizing the complaints, we're, we need to be a little more effective on addressing the vacant homes that we have in the city and establishing a better procedure to get compliance in getting these homes cleaned up, weeds, signs. So there's just certain priority complaints that I think the county will allow us to address more effectively. And like I said, the building division will still be addressing code, you know, code enforcement, but on a lesser scale. We'll be maybe dealing more with, you know, illegal signage and just the easier complaints that don't require so much time.
Okay.
Through the chair, I just, just to underscore what Councilmember Grocott said, I think what it comes down to is we have, there's certain cultural values that we've sort of, we helped imbue upon the building division to sort of say, here's the way we'd like these sort of conducted. Here's the
Right.
And it's probably worth, as the county takes over, just a review of how we, how we like to handle those culturally in San Carlos and make sure that that's kind of a shared value. I think it's as much approach and customer service style approach and a friendly approach. And I think we just want to make sure that whoever's going to be doing that, they sort of have a similar style. And it's worth a very specific, you know, you addressing it very specifically with whoever's in county, and they maybe have a meeting of the people that are actually going to be doing it and talking about that so they understand it's a clear goal of San Carlos to handle it a certain way. And the only reason I'm saying it like that is if it doesn't, then we have something that we can clearly say this, we put this out there, this is the way we want it done, and it's not being done the way that we ask. So I would just say, it is something that's worth addressing. I wouldn't necessarily anticipate a problem just because we're going to county, but I would say that it is value of ours.
To address one other thing that Mr. Grocott stated is, this will be for municipal code enforcement. I think that the prior scenario that you alluded to was kind of a combination of building code enforcement and municipal code kind of lumped into one in somewhat of a heavy-handed manner. This, this program or this proposal is to address municipal code enforcement, blight, weeds, you know, that kind of stuff, the stuff that we get complaints on. We don't get complaints from people saying that, you know, my shear nailing isn't correct, we need to send a guy out, you know, that kind of stuff.
If I may, through the chair, what I'm hearing is, is just like in our strategic planning and our retreats and so forth, you know, community character is an important thing. And people who don't abate weeds and unsightly, you know, abandoned homes and/or commercial buildings for that matter, that doesn't fit our character in San Carlos. And so that's one thing. And then, and I'm not, you know, by my comments, I'm not saying, don't do your job, which is ultimately, your job is public safety and of occupied buildings and so forth. So I'm not asking you not to do your job, but you've stated it very well and
Yeah, I
To the nub of it.
Thank you. I should emphasize that with every code enforcement complaint, there's a, there's a human element that is dubbed, that is involved that requires a special touch. For instance, with hoarding, we need to recognize that it's not just a bunch of stuff packed into a house, it's a disease.
Right.
And you need to recognize it as such.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Valley. Did you have anything, Mr. Royce?
Yeah. Comment, I think having code enforcement, I think Mr. Grocott brings a good point. When you go from zero or having no enforcement to enforcement, we need to be careful with the transition. I know, I use an example, just within the past year, signage is, of course, a major issue. And we had a plumbing company that got involved with some signage and then they ended up welding a container, a container of a ship on top of, and putting on top of that its van with its name and a headlight and a, I mean, a floodlight and everything right on the freeway. And so we didn't have the code enforcement, it took us a while to actually get them, to actually get rid of that. And then it's two months later, now, you don't see this because it's only done on the weekend. They put their, their van or their big truck, they open up the back all the way and they put their advertising facing 101. Now, Monday morning, you show up to work and it's backed down. You don't see it because you're not at work Saturday through Sunday. So there are people there that just push the envelope all the time. You know what the code enforcement is for signage, and we just want our people to do the right things. And without code enforcement, they're going to just continue to play with us. And so I'm encouraged to get some meat involved in what we say our ordinances are.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to authorize a shared service agreement with San Mateo County for code enforcement services with the city of San Carlos.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Valley. And then a couple cleanup items before we retire for the night. I forgot to mention earlier, we had interviews with the Residential Design Review Committee, and we appointed Robert Hudson to that committee. It was, we had two interviews and they both were phenomenal applicants, and we thanked them for applying. And then tonight, we are going to be adjourning on behalf of, we have a little bit of a list tonight. First off, Chief Skinner, our new fire chief, his mother passed away last week, Connie, so we'll be adjourning in her memory. We'll also be adjourning in the memory of the San Bruno victims from the fire, the PG&E pipe blast last year. And of course, as Mr. Grocott pointed out, yesterday was the 10-year anniversary of the attacks on September 11th. So we'll be adjourning in honor of all of those who were lost. Thank you. Have a good night.